It is seven o'clock and we have a quorum. We'll call the council meeting order. First item on the agenda will be the invocation led by Councilman Durham and then the pledge of both American and Texas flags led by Councilman Vaughn. If you would, join me in a moment of silence.
If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin the salute to the Texas flag, I would like to remind everybody that today is Texas's birthday, 179 years old today, I believe.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation that we'd like to present tonight. If I could have Josh Roberts come forward. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce, I'm gonna steal a little bit of your thunder here. Take the opportunity to introduce to you our new emergency management coordinator, Mr. Josh Roberts. He's newly with us, been here a very short time, but we're so glad to have you with us and supporting a long-term relationship with you. We know you'll do a great job going forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Very happy to be here.
Well, good. Let me give you this proclamation and I'll let you say a few words all about it if you'd like to. Whereas each year brings the potential for violent weather to Texas and large portions of our state, including the city of Lewisville, can be devastated by flooding, tornadoes, hailstorms, straight-line winds, and other severe emergencies. Whereas the city of Lewisville, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, have joined together to urge all citizens to prepare for severe weather events and to educate themselves on safety strategies. And whereas Governor Greg Abbott has declared the week of March 1st through 7th, 2015, a severe weather awareness week in Texas. Now therefore, in official recognition of the statewide event, I am Mayor Dean Uckert, Mayor of the city of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the entire city council, and our citizens do hereby proclaim March 1st through 7th, 2015, a severe awareness week and urge everyone in our community to learn more about and educate themselves and their children to participate in severe weather preparedness activities available in the city of Lewisville proclaim second day of March 2015. Once again, I want to present this with you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to say a few words about the emergency preparedness?
I couldn't have said it better myself, Mayor. The proclamation here says it all.
All right. Thank you very much, Josh. Once again, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Let's give Josh a big round of applause. Next item is a public hearing consideration of ordinance for zone change requests from agricultural open space to light industrial for a 19.055 acre tract of land located on the south side of Bennett Lane, approximately 1,350 feet east of I-35E, further identified as tracks 9, 10, 11, 11A, 1, 13, 14, 15 of the W. King Survey Abstract 697 as requested by DCT Water Ridge LLC and Copernicus Investment to Property Owners. The 19.055 acre property is located on the south side of Bennett Lane, approximately 125 feet west of Ridgeview Drive and 1,350 feet from the I-35E frontage road. The zone change request is consistent of, consists of several tracts that are currently zoned AO. A portion of the site is part of a land swap with a granite shop at the western edge of the site. While the majority of the site is proposed for an approximately 345,720 square foot office warehouse facility, the site is adjacent to the Water Ridge Business Park and the proposed use is similar in nature to those in the business park. Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning change request by a vote of 6-0 at their meeting on February 3rd, 2015. Recognition staff in the council approved the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I did not have any cards to speak. Motion to close public hearing, Councilman Ferguson?
If there's no public comment, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. A motion by Councilman Ferguson, close the public hearing. Second by Councilman, who was it? Councilman Tierney, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Tierney, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately 19.055 acre tract of land located on the south side of Bennett Lane, approximately 1,350 feet east of Interstate 35E from agricultural open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit for a U-Haul self-storage facility and an outdoor RV boat travel trailer storage facility and one associated variance on a 8.276 acre tract of land zoned warehouse located on the west side of Valley Ridge Boulevard, north of Business State Highway 121 at 811 East State Highway 121, further identified as Storage Supercenter Edition Lot 5 Block A as requested by Americo Real Estate Company of Texas, the property owner. The subject request is for the addition of a new warehouse building covered in uncovered outside RV boat travel trailer parking to the existing U-Haul self-storage facility. The zoning ordinance requires that an SUP be obtained both for self-storage facilities and for outdoor RV boat travel trailer storage. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of SUP by a vote of 6-0 at their meeting on February 3rd, 2015. Recognition of staff as the council approves proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion to be closed.
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, Councilman Vaughn, I do need to, before we close the public hearing, I beg your pardon, I almost forgot to read a card. See that, Claire? I told you, sometimes I forget though. I do have a card here spirited out by Governor Kerry. He is here to answer any questions. He does not wish to speak, but he is in support and is here to answer any questions that anyone might have. Other than that, I don't have any cards. Councilman Vaughn, if you want to close public hearing, I'm sorry, sir.
May I make a motion to be closed, public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to close the public hearing, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we approve the ordinance?
Second.
Sorry. I didn't know you were gonna say anything else.
Ordinance and variance as set forth in the caption above.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Ferguson, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for a self-storage facility with outdoor travel trailer boat RV storage located on Lot 5 Block A of the Storage Supercenter Edition containing approximately 8.276 acres, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is a visitor citizen forum, and this time any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have any cards filled out for anyone to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests for a citizen to request removal of an item. A speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone fill out any cards and no one to ask to have any item pulled. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve consent agenda, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item six is consideration of a variance of Lewisville City Code Section 2-201 fee schedule regarding a waiver of fees for personnel to erect and dismantle tents associated with the 2015 American Cancer Society Relay for Life located at the Lewisville High School Harmon Campus and consideration of a request for city in-kind support for the same event as requested by Jillian Schwarzenbach, Community Manager Relay for Life, American Cancer Society. The 2015 Relay for Life of Lewisville Flyer Mountain event will be held from Friday, May 15, 2015, at 6:00 PM to Saturday, May 16, 2015, at 6:00 AM. A request is being made to do two. A, provide city in-kind support of eight tents in staff time to erect dismantled tents related to the event, and B, to waive any associated fees for the event, including fees for personnel to erect dismantled tents. This event was held last year at the Harmon Lewisville School, 1250 West Round Grove Road, Lewisville, Texas, 75067, and drew over 33 teams, over 500 participants, and raised over $53,000. Recommendation is, staff as a council approves the variance as requested for city in-kind support and set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank the council for the last several years that they have approved this. It's a phenomenal organization. It brings our students, it brings our local communities, it brings our medical center and it brings our residents together and it creates a really amazing event. If you get a chance, go on out there and see how many folks are out there and have been impacted by cancer and are doing their darndest to get rid of it. That's all I have.
With that, Councilman Gilmore, I also want to take the opportunity to thank you for all the work that you've done for that program and helping not only get the thing developed, but keep it going every year and actually to make it grow each year. And you've worked with the different cities, make sure everybody gets participation. We appreciate all the work you've done on that, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven is consideration of ordinances amending the Lewisville City Code of Ordnances, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201 fee schedule by adding a fee for municipal setting designations applications, increasing the animal adoption fee from $50 to $90, and adding a new microchip fee of $15 per animal, and approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $36,410 to the general fund. On February 16, 2015, city council approved an ordinance which established a process for considering local support of municipal setting designations. The ordinance requires an application fee to be paid by persons seeking local support of the MSD. The proposed amendment to the fee schedule adds the MSD application fee to Chapter 2, Section 2-201 of the Lewisville Code. In addition, Animal Services currently charges a $50 adoption fee for both dogs and cats, but is seeking to increase the feeding fee to $90 to cover sterilization of all pets prior to adoption. Staff also feels it's important to add a microchipping fee. Many citizens come to the shelter expecting the microchipping service that is now offered in many surrounding shelters. Staff is seeking to add the new program for the fee to the public of $15 per animal. Staff is seeking approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $36,410 to the general fund to pay for the increased costs associated with the sterilization of microchipping programs. Recognition of staff as the council approved the requested ordinance amendments and supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption above. I want to take just a minute and commend our staff that has worked with our new adoption center and animal shelter and the wonderful job that they've done since its opening and how it's brought awareness to the public of the need for people to go out and adopt animals. And proud to be able to sit here tonight and say that for the first time in the city's history, we have not had to euthanize an animal for 12 consecutive months because we didn't have space for that animal. And that goes to speak not only to our citizens, but also to the staff who get out there and make this where known to people. Also, I want to let you know that the microchipping that we're talking about is not, it will be done for the animals that are there before you adopt them, but also if someone would like to have their animal microchipped, they can bring it to the shelter, to the adoption center, and they will have your animal microchip for the 15, same $15 fee. And then also, the increase in the fee, the $90 increase, is there to help with the sterilization of animals so that people don't have to wait, if they come and adopt an animal before they can pick up the animal. Sometimes that creates a two to three day wait for their family, plus it causes some problems with children and stuff like that when they adopt the pet. So this will be done in advance so that the people don't, it's just a much smoother orientation way of having it done. So I want to commend our staff on doing that. I do have a speaker card filled out here, Mr. John Grenna, said he'd like to speak. Can we just give you a name and address, correct?
John Grenna, 417 Creekwood Lane. Mayor, every word you said is, I would like to repeat it, but I'm not going to. What I want to do is also commend the city staffer coming up with us. I've been to the shelter several times and it seems like every time I go, I hear that same old story, oh, what, have to do this? I have to come back and do this? What a fantastic idea. And I want to just reiterate to the citizens of Lewisville that that $40 increase from $50 to $90 saves tons of time and money and your efforts, and it just would make the whole adoption process even more enjoyable. I also want to state that the animal shelter does take donations. So if the citizens want to donate to those to help people adopt and, you know, help with the cost of that, I applaud the city for doing what they're doing. Thank you.
Also donate your time.
That's true. Okay. And with that, remember there are two actual items that'd be, take, adopted here. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'm gonna move that we, how did I want to do this particular one?
You can just do both.
I've moved that we're just gonna move for both of these ordinances as written.
And the supplemental appropriation?
As well as the supplemental appropriation. Thank you, sir.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve both ordinances and the supplemental appropriation, a second by Councilman Durham, counselor.
There are two ordinances relating to this one item. They are an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville Code of Ordnances, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 fee schedule by adding a fee for municipal setting designations applications, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. The second is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201 fee schedule by increasing the per animal adoption fee and adding a fee for microchipping an animal, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. That brings us to two reports. Nika, Bob, Chief, Linda.
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to just tell you a little bit about Josh, who comes to us from the Texas Department of Public Safety where he was a district coordinator. He brings with a lot of experience to the city of Lewisville. He's also served as an emergency management coordinator at the state and local level. He's been involved in several federally, federal disasters such as the West fertilizer explosion and several weather events. So I wanted to take this opportunity just to introduce him to the public and also with him tonight, we have our EMC specialist, Eric Makar, who comes to us from, he started in November, and he comes to us from the Texas Women's University. So they are getting us all prepared as we enter into this season of unpredictable storms.
Eric, it's also glad to have you with us too, sir. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Chief? Carol?
No, sir, I know you're gonna ask. We did get some much-needed rain and I did check in from February the 21st until today, we've actually come up almost a foot.
Wow.
So, .96, so that's close enough to say it's a foot. So hopefully if it continues, and we'll get more runoff from when the rest of this melts and makes it our way, but we actually are off of the state, so we're no longer in a severe drought, we're moderate and right on the cusp of being just abnormally dry. So we do need a little more rain, but that is a little bit of breath of fresh air.
I heard, of course, it's just one of the TV channels, but one of the other people said it, actually that for the year, we're actually a little over an inch ahead of rainfall as case for a year, but we also know that sometimes that gets caught up in the summer months, so.
It put a damper on our creek cleaning operations because that crew all went off to sanding, so, but that's the good news. We'll take precipitation any way we can get it.
A lot of good news about the sanding too and the streets being accessible here in the city, and I appreciate all the work they did. I know that's not a fun job, but we appreciate it. Gina? Brenda? Ms. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
Oh, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, just briefly, Lila, our nature preserve, we've got a new walking trail starting March 21st, 9:00 AM, 201 East Jones Street. If you'd like to go find out more about the Blackjack Trail, it's a 1.5 mile trail and it's got some unique terrain. Eagle Scouts have come out and helped build bridges and benches. We've had residents as well as UNT volunteers cleaning up and creating a phenomenal outdoor activity area for our citizens to enjoy as well as the entire region. Also in Lila this month, we've got twilight kayaking tours, night hikes, bird walks, nature walks, outdoor yoga. It's amazing the amount of activities that have started over there and really excited about where Lila is going and the partnership that we've been able to create. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barron?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing? Okay. Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Got quite a few things going on at the MCL Grand coming up quickly. I'm gonna lead off with Willis Allen Ramsey. I probably mentioned it before, this is actually an old friend of mine from a long time back, kind of achieved a fair amount of success, mostly as a songwriter for other performers, did publish or print or whatever you want to call it, one album of music, but kind of disappeared into the woodwork. He's come back out and started touring, and so I'm gonna be real excited to see him again. I haven't seen him as an acquaintance in a long time, but I will tell you, he's a phenomenal showman, outstanding guitarist, great voice, and very, very witty and clever and poignant songwriting. So that's March 14th, it starts at 8:00 PM in the main hall at MCL Grand. We also have a 35 Express public meeting that's coming up on Thursday, March 5th. It'll be at 5:00 PM in the main auditorium at MCL Grand, and that'll be run by Tech Dot. We have the Texas Act Fest coming back again. This is a very exciting event. It's live performances by eight acting troops from around the state, and they compete for state title and a trip to the national contest. So it's an opportunity to see a lot of different performances by a lot of different groups and performers. That runs March 19th through the 21st, and it's presented by Texas Nonprofit Theaters. The MCL Hospital, Medical Center of Lewisville, is continuing its Healthy You series with Heart Health on March 24th, and those are usually in the recital hall, which is to the left of the main auditorium. And of course, Friday nights, always Visual Arts League Acoustic Jam. This is getting to be a pretty crowded event, very popular, drawing people from all over the metroplex. You need to check it out sometime. In the art gallery, we have the Nature of Texas exhibit presented by Visual Arts League that runs through the 21st. And then in the north hallway, an exhibit called Steampunk by Visual Arts League and also runs through the 21st. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of things I'd like to point out. One of them is that Lewisville has partnered with UNT to conduct a resources and efficiency assessment of all city facilities, land-owned, and car vehicle usage. And this is the first step in implementing some of the provisions of the 2025 Vision Plan. Secondly, LISD is showing a free screening of a documentary called Finding Kind, and it is a look in today's girl's world. And the show is March 5th at 6:30 at the high school auditorium, and there will be a discussion to follow. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Claire, I want to say thank you very much for stepping in tonight. You did an admirable job. We appreciate all your work that you do each and every day, not just tonight.
It's my honor.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Do you think? Officer, once again, we appreciate you being here tonight, and not only that, but we appreciate the service you do each and every day, you and your team members. If you'd pass that on, we'd greatly appreciate it. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney legal issues related to the construction of the Old Town Park Plaza, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, pending litigation, City of Lewisville versus City of Farmers Branch and Camelot Landfield, TXLP, cause number 412-CV-00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Modification to Municipal Solid Waste Permit Number 1312A, and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment Permit Number 1312B. Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations will now convene into closed session. session. Is the action to be taken?
Moved to adjourn.
Have most to adjourn by Councilman Gilmore.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.[1775.82]